A meeting to order. Our agenda is as follows. We have the approval of the minutes of the May 22 meeting. Following that, we have an A and R proposal for Doughty Road. And then 6:35, public hearing, scenic road application for Doughty Road. Joint public hearing with tree warden and the planning board. The applicant submitted an application for removal of trees and stone walls for the construction of driveways. And also seeks after the fact approval for the removal of trees. Then we have the town planner update. Old and new business. So, present this evening, all members of the board are present except for Ms. Penny Dumas. And as are Ms. Bouvan, the town planner. And Rebecca DeCoursey are the assistant. So you have before you the minutes from Tuesday, May 22. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to that? Actually, I do. Just noticing that. I have Sturbridge Plenary Draft Minutes of Tuesday, Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday.
Yeah. We can take one of those Tuesdays.
Just want to make it clear.
I was reading it and thinking, hmm, that looked a little odd. Thank you, Ms. Bouvan.
You're welcome.
Okay, there being none, I will take a motion to accept the draft minutes of the Tuesday, May 22 as corrected.
The move.
Mr. Blanchard, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. One, two, three, four. Four to four, to zero, to two abstentions. Okay. Because we were not here that evening. All right. We have an A and R proposal for division of land on Doughty Road into 13 lots and the remaining land. The lots and the remaining land meet the requi-- well, I'll tell Ms. Bouvan, ask Ms. Bouvan to give us the report. Is there someone here to talk about?
Mr. Fitzback?
Yes, would you please? It doesn't matter where we'd like to do, but you do need to be at a microphone and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Bruce Fitzback, professional landscape engineer with Burton Engineering. I'm here today with Andy from Escape Estates and representing the applicant, Peter O'Connell.
And you wish to do-- can just explain to us what you're doing?
Yeah, we have a 13-lot A and R on Doughty Road, both on the south and north side. I don't know. In the application packet, there is a check sheet in there that has all the criteria for the lots.
Okay. And again, just for, because this is a large parcel of land that was up for discussion, just so people know what we mean by an A and R plan. That means it's approval not required for subdivision approval, so that these lots, these are all lots that are on the public way. And because they're on the public way, they do not require subdivision approval. That when you go in and do the remaining land and create a new road, that will require subdivision approval and whole other set of public hearings, et cetera. Okay? But these are lots that are, they are all, their frontage is all on Doughty Road, which is a public way. Ms. Bouvan, your recommendation?
My recommendation is that you endorse the plans submitted, since it does meet the requirements.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions or discussion from the board? There being none, I will take a motion to endorse the plan as provided.
The move.
Mr. Chamberlain, do I have a second?
Second.
Waters, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And motion carries unanimously. I'll ask the clerk to please sign the plans. All right, now we have a public hearing for scenic road application. I'll ask the clerk to please read the public hearing notice.
Town of Sturbridge, Doughty Road. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Chapter 40, 15C, and the Sturbridge General Bylaws 3.74, scenic roads, and Section 8, non-hazardous tree removal, the Sturbridge Planning Board and Sturbridge Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing at the Center Office Building, 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 6:35 PM. On the scenic road application of Peter O'Connell of 500 Victory Road in Quincy, Mass., a property located along Doughty Road in Sturbridge. The applicant requests a scenic roads special permit for stone wall and tree removal and previous unpermitted tree removal to create driveways on 13 lots and one sewer pumping station along Doughty Road. The applicant proposes the following changes to the scenic road. Lot 1, 30 feet of stone wall, eight trees, one 9-inch ash, two 10-inch ash, one 9-inch twin ash, two 10-inch twin ash, one 11-inch maple, one 8-inch twin ash. Six stumps, one 5 inches, two 7 inches, one 8 inches, and two 10 inches. Lot 2, 24-foot stone wall, seven trees, one 4-inch maple, one 6-inch maple, one 6-inch ash, one 7-inch ash, one 10-inch ash, two 10-inch maple. 10 stumps, two 4-inch, six 5-inch, two 6-inch. Lot 3, 26 square feet of stone wall. Lot 4, 60 feet of stone wall. Lot 5, 40 feet of stone wall. Lot 6, 40 feet of stone wall. Lot 7, 71 of stone wall. Six trees, two 24-inch oak, two 24-inch ash, one 14-inch oak, one 10-inch pine. Lot 8, 24 feet of stone wall, three trees, two 5-inch ash, one 22-inch maple. Lot 9, 28 feet of stone wall, four trees, one 14-inch ash, three 10-inch maple. Lot 10, nothing. Lot 11, 28 feet of stone wall. Lot 12, 26 feet of stone wall. Seven trees, one 10-inch maple, one 8-inch maple, one 15-inch cherry, one 9-inch maple, one 14-inch cherry, one 6-inch maple, one 10-inch cherry. Three stumps, two 9 inches, one 5 inches. Lot 13, 26 feet of stone wall, one tree, one 20-inch twin ash. Sewer pump station, 24 feet of stone wall. A copy of this application may be inspected at the office of the town clerk during the regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So I'd like to open the public hearing. I would note that today we received a letter from Burton Engineering requesting that we remove Lot 2, Lot 7, and Lot 9 from this application. I assume that's because you're not going to remove stone wall from those?
We're going to address those sites or those lots at a future date.
Okay.
And Lot 2 and 9 are actually being removed. Two will come off the future subdivision road. Lot 7, we need to get some better sightlines for safety. And Lot number 9, we actually moved the driveway to a location where there is no wall or trees.
All right. So at this point in time, we will not be considering Lot 2, Lot 7, or Lot 9. If they're going to be changed, we will do that in the future.
Yes.
Okay? All right. I will also notice that, note that, all the abutters, we have certified copies of letters, we have, well, verification that certified letters were sent to the abutters regarding this public hearing. And again, this is a joint hearing with the tree warden. The scenic roads bylaw was adopted by the town many years ago. Certain roads in town are designated as scenic roads. Doughty Road is one of them. And in doing that, we are supposed to take a look at cutting or removing trees in the public way, repair, maintenance, and reconstruction of paving work, and tearing down or destruction of stone walls. And these are designated, and that is why we are having the public hearing. Our goal is that we are to look at approval of the proposed action in terms of preservation of historic values, preservation of scenic and aesthetic quality, protection of natural resources, public safety, and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. So that is why we are having this joint public hearing this evening. Okay? I will also note that in the course of doing some of their work, that some trees were removed in the public way. An enforcement order was issued, and so there are issues that we will be discussing in regard to the removal of public trees in the, removal of trees on the scenic road in the public way as well. So I'll turn it over to the proponent to describe to us what you are proposing.
Okay. How much detail do you want to get into here?
Why don't you, I would say, why don't you start with giving us a broad outline of what you're doing? And then we'll open it, I'm sorry, for people who are, what we'll do is, he'll do a presentation. I'll open it up to questions from the board. And then we'll open up to questions from the public. And then, then we'll see where we get to. Okay? So why don't you do a broad, sort of a general presentation and see where our issues are?
Okay. The A and R that was just approved is the same location as this scenic road application. And on the lots, all that was read in the public notice here tonight, the stone walls, any stones that come off the property or out of the walls that we remove will stay on the property. We will rebuild the ends of the walls and make them look nice. And the remaining will go into the walls that front the road to repair any damaged or knocked down spots out there. The trees that we've got taken down are only for the driveway purposes and for sightline to make it safe. Other than that, I do have on the map all the safety figures. There are sightlines for people coming out of each driveway, both left and right. I've got stopping distances recorded on the maps as well for safety, for safety of the individuals who will own the lot and the general public. I did notice one error on the map when I was creating my checklist here tonight. On Lot 6, a stopping distance coming from the westbound traffic was listed as 200 feet on the map. We relocated that driveway to the other side of the lot, and it is now 306 feet. So all of our stopping distances meet the safety requirements as put out by the DOT, and the sightline requirements fall under the guidelines and meet the requirements or the recommendations of the Ashto regulations for unobstructed and safe travel on the town road.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain, any questions, comments?
No, not at this time.
I have a question about the stone walls. I live in a residential area, and the driveways for a two-garage car are generally about 15 feet. And what we see here is they run for anywhere from 20 feet to 71 feet wide. And that seems much more than is really needed for a driveway.
Well, the reason they are so wide is because of the slopes and the way the road and the lots rise up from the road. We have to grade for the driveways, and that grading is going to end up removing more wall than would typically be removed on a flat road or a flat property adjacent to the road.
Wherever you have listed the linear feet of wall to be removed, is that in one location, or is it going to be interrupted across the lot?
It will be in the location of the driveway only.
Only?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And will some of that eventually get replaced back?
Andy from Escape Estates is here. If you, sure.
Just introduce yourself, Mr. Cormier.
Andre Cormier Jr., known as Andy. I work for Escape Estates Incorporated. Just to add to what Bruce was saying, so if we remove, let's say, a driveway because of sloping on the sides, we need to remove 50 feet of wall. What will happen is the driveway will end up 15 feet, just like you said. And those stones at the end of the sloping, we have to remove them to do the work, but afterwards, the walls will be rebuilt and follow the curve of the driveway going in. So we would close that back up. It's just that, for construction purposes, we would have to remove it temporarily and then rebuild those sections. So the walls would be about, the driveway would end up about 15 feet with the walls rebuilt. But during the construction, we'd have to remove that much to do the work.
Thank you.
Will they be rebuilt as the drywall, dry stone?
It would be drywall, stone walls, and any stones that are taken that are removed that won't be going back there. If you've been up Doughty Road, a lot of those walls are in disrepair over the years. In fact, some sections of wall have actually tumbled into the town road because they were on such a steep incline, and the earth has been slowly pushing them. We pretty much planned from one end of the road to the other to do maintenance work on all the walls.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Ms. Hart?
It does indicate in your write-up that they, that you would construct appropriate new, new ends of walls, but, and to repair existing road furnished stone walls. So if, as you were, good example that you used, that you took out 50 feet and your driveway is now 15 feet wide, you would then add to the wall and then encap it, so to speak?
Correct.
Is what you're planning? Okay. I thought that's what this meant. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Waters?
I have no questions.
Do we hear from Mr. Chamberlain? You want to talk to us about, since your, your joint public hearing should be asking you about the trees?
Sure. So as the board knows, the history is that, you know, there was some unfortunate tree removal on this property. And, you know, amongst all the other stuff, that's where we are today. So I'm pleased to report that after several meetings and discussions with, you know, the Cormiers and their engineers and what have you, we have come to a, an agreement which, you know, will become part of, you know, the record tonight and part of, you know, both, both hearings. So the original unpermitted tree work amounted to a total of 189 tree stems. A number of them, somewhere in the vicinity of about 45 or 50, were 2 inches or less. And of course, that doesn't put it in the scenic roads bylaw. And under Mass. General Law, is a tree that's an inch and a half in diameter, measured one foot from the ground, that's the start of where a tree starts. So, you know, we, you know, we just discounted basically anything smaller than 2 inches. The town did hire, because of the extensiveness of, you know, what appeared to be happening there, we did hire an outside certified arborist who is qualified in tree appraisal methodology. And he issued a report and established a value, counted all the stumps, that's why we know it's 189, and established a value for all of those trees, using at my direction the lowest appraisal criteria. The reason for that is, for the most part, this is, and if you go up there today, except for certain areas, you'll see there still is a fairly adequate tree stock on that road. I mean, some areas now need to be infilled. But, you know, a lot of that has come up through natural generation and, to some extent, lack of maintenance by the town to properly mow the edges of the roads over the, you know, historical life of this particular street. So, you know, in treating the Cormiers as I would any, you know, applicant that would approach me and say, you know, obviously, there was, you know, some give and take and some realization that, you know, they have the right to develop the lots, they have the right to put in the driveways, and, you know, so we need to start at some basic assumptions there. So, long and short of it is, the project proponent has agreed to pay for the arborist report, which we now have, we do have that checked in our possession tonight. That report cost the town $1,007, so they have agreed to pay, and we do have the check for that. The damage to the 189 trees, after review and, you know, going over the report and actually walking the streets, and if you do look at the report, there were a number of trees that were white ash trees on this street. And I think most of you are fairly well aware, the next great big bug in Massachusetts is the emerald ash borer. And that bug only kills white ash trees, and there's no natural, on a whole scale area, there's no natural way to control it. So at the end of the day, ash trees are going to die, and there's no way the town's going to really prevent that once the insect is here. So in consideration, I discounted all of the white ash trees. So as you, you know, you, even in the scenic road report, you see all of those white ash stumps. I just, you know, you know, it's unfortunate he took them down sooner, but we'd be taking them down later. So to really penalize them for that, I didn't think was, was appropriate. The end of the day, we came up with a value, a total of, and as you know, under our non-hazard tree removal bylaw, we have a mechanism of assessing a value of a 2-inch caliper replacement tree for every approximate 2-inch caliper of the tree diameter that's been removed. And so using that formula, we came up with a total value of 82 trees to be replaced or to be compensated for as part of the unauthorized tree removal. And the value we agreed to was a value of $350 a tree. This past spring, I planted trees. We bought them. We paid a contractor to plant them, and that came to $325 a tree. So, you know, knowing that this is going forward, the value we set was at $350 a tree. So with that, the damages or the rest, the making hole the town for the loss of the trees that were improperly cut came to a total of $28,655. On the lots, at the end of the day, after we looked at everything, the lots that were withdrawn, we ended up with three lots out of the 13 that have trees on it that are subject to the hearing tonight, that haven't been cut, but are subject, you know, to the hearing. And so of those, they were on Lot 1, Lot 8, and Lot 12. And again, using the same formula as I've already explained, discounting off the ash trees, and then putting a value on the remaining trees. Lot 1 has a replacement value of $5,600 for a total of 16 trees, a value of 16 trees. Lot 8 has a value of 10 trees for $3,500. And Lot 12 has a value, I don't have a total of that, let me just, 10, 16, 21, 23, 27. So it has a value of 27 trees at a value of $9,450. So that, trees comes to a total, if my math is right, of 53 trees and a total value of In the process of walking the road, we identified three other ash trees that are either dead or in decline and should be removed. And so the agreement has been, in, in exchange for the reduction of 10 trees, or, you know, to make it easy, the one tree on Lot 8, the 22-inch maple, that the Cormiers will be removing those three hazard ash trees at no cost to the town. So there are additional trees coming down, but again, these are dead and dying trees, and I'd be taking them down shortly anyway. So that's an agreement. So that takes off that $18,550. That takes off $3,500. So that leaves a remaining value of $15,050. And so the agreement that was reached with the Cormier, subject to the approval of us collectively tonight voting, would be that at the time they come in to pull the building permits, either one or both, or at least one, for the two buildable lots that you just approved tonight, two of them passed the perk test, so that now, you know, you've approved it, they are actually buildable, that when they come in to pull that building, they will pay the town the $28,655, and that will go into the town's tree planting gift account. So it'll be used for future tree planting efforts. And then in the future, at such time as the water and sewer line are resolved and run up there, and they pull the building permits for lots 1 and 12, then those payments will be made at that time. And the trees will be obviously cut down at that time. So this way, if, for whatever reason, the subdivision stops and doesn't go forward, they're not taking the trees, and obviously, we're not collecting for damages because they haven't, they haven't happened yet. So I think it provides a level of equity on both sides that, you know, when he needs to take the trees down, we'll get compensated for it, but until then, they stay standing. So that's kind of where we're at on the tree side. There will be some tree replanting on Doughty Road as, you know, this project goes forward, as the, you know, project proponent envisions it. And those, the value of that, you know, the town will buy the trees, and the Cormiers will be planting the trees. And for every tree he plants, we'll be compensating him back $150 for the cost of the actual planting, which is, again, it's part of that $350 value. Okay? So, you know, we've, I think we've kind of worked everything out to, you know, satisfy Mass. General Law's Chapter 87 and to, you know, provide for replanting on the street. Obviously, I'm not requiring him, nor would I advise that we do, until such time as he goes to build. Because as you heard, you know, he needs to do a lot of cutting and grading to get the driveways in, extensive stone wall removal, put trees back, and that'd be part of the, you know, it's, let him get everything done, then we'll put the trees back when the construction and the dust has settled, and the trees will have a much better chance of survivability too.
Okay. Let me just, so, the money--
I know, that's a lot, yes.
No, let me just, I just want to double-check. The money that he will pay at the time of the building, when he pulls his building permits, that money goes into the general tree fund--
Yes.
--of the town. And, and when, he does not, he's not going to necessarily replace 125 trees or however many, okay? But if he does replace, whatever trees get replaced, you replace it at the 350, but the 350 will be the cost of the tree and then the reimbursement of the rest of that. Is that my understanding?
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right. So the tree costs X amount of that, the planting costs X amount. Okay? So let me see if I've got these figures right. He has paid out of all of this. So we are asking him to pay at the time he pulls the building permit for whatever, all the lots, except for any lots.
I believe it's Lot 6 and 3 were the two that were past the perk?
Right. But we approved, we actually approved 13, 12 lots--
12 lots, yeah.
--for the A and R. So at the time he pulls, pulls any-- -for the A and R. So, at the time he pulls, pulls any of the lots, except for 1 and 12, right?
No. That's what I was clarifying. Lots 3 and 6 passed the perk test. So, when he walks in tomorrow, if he so chooses, and says, "I wanna pull the building permit"
Right.
-for lots, either Lot 6 or 3, he has to pay the $28,655.
Okay, for lots 6 or 3.
Lot 6 or 3.
Okay, now, just to pay-
And any of the other lots-
Okay, yeah, so, let me just make sure I get this right, okay? I'm gonna repeat, I wanna repeat it so that I get this straight, okay? So, I have, because we have to make a proposal on it shortly. Okay. So, when he pulls the building permit for Lots 6 or 3, he will then, at that time, be required to pay $28,655, and that goes into the town's tree-
It'll be, you know, I mean, it'll be presented to the selectmen and accepted as a gift-
Okay.
...and it goes into our established tree planting gift per the non-hazard tree removal bylaw.
Okay. Then, when he pulls building permits for Lot 1, and then for Lot 12, for each of those lots, he will pay the amounts required, which is $5,600 at Lot 1, and $9,450 for Lot 12.
Correct.
Okay. And that will take care of that, and then he will be, if any tree, so, we won't necessarily be replacing 125 trees on Doughty Road, but any that he replaces, he will get reimbursed at 350, well, no-
He will get reimbursed at $150 per tree-
Right.
...and that's to actually pay him for the actual physical planting of the tree.
Right, which is what we assume costs, and that comes out of that, okay, for any trees that, that get replaced in the public way.
In the public way, yep.
Right, that does not account for trees that will be then be planted as part of the subdivision, right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So, that's a whole different thing when we get to that point.
I was gonna ask that question.
Right. Well, technically, well, because that's, that actually will be a question, because if that gets, you know, when the subdivision gets approved and there's a road in there, those lots will then be in the public way.
Right. This is, this is the-
So, so, the trees that he has to put there in the public way will be the same thing.
But it won't be a public way until after it's pretty much completed, right?
Well, it would have to be approved, just all of it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Well, not my problem.
Right.
Somebody else wants to ask a question, go ahead. I'm gonna stop right there. Okay, so that sounds like where we're at, okay? All right. Now, I'm gonna open up to the public. Do the public have any questions or comments? Members of the public, please stand at the microphone and identify yourself.
Yes, Roxanne Smith, 70 Holland Road. I wanna ask if, is the town, is the stone wall work only gonna occur once the building permit is ha, issued?
Is that anybody?
I would assume that they're not going to, but the tech, the honest answer is, once you grant this approval tonight, they can start that work. So, whether they need to move the stone walls to get them ready for that work, but I would say that we could put a condition of approval that if, for some reason, the lots are not developed, the stone wall needs to be replaced, because he's proposing, the applicant's proposing to take it down, put in the driveways, and then kind of reconstruct the ends. So, I would say, if any removal occurs and those lots are not developed, there should be a condition that they be put back in place.
But doesn't he, does he need a, does he need a building permit to put the driveway in?
No, he only needs a street entrance permit for that.
Okay. So, he could-
But he would need a driveway permit, right.
Right, that's why I said street entrance permit, yeah.
Right. So, we could make that a condition, if we choose to do that?
Yes, you could.
My concern is that these stone walls could be removed, and then there's no progress for anything, and we're just left looking at holes in stone walls.
Yep. Good point.
Would you like me to speak to that? I, we would not remove any stone walls, any portions of the stone walls unless we had, we're gonna, had our driveway permit and our building permit. That's when we would work in front of that lot. There may be some reconstruction of walls, but not removal. Like, there are sections of wall already tumbling down, and we may start rebuilding stone walls, but the removal would only happen when we're ready to actually build a driveway.
So, would you have a problem if we made that a condition, that removal takes place only once you have your driveway permit, that permit?
Yeah, the driveway permit would be perfect.
Okay. We can do that. Okay. Are there other questions now that we've got the figures and things? Yeah, Smith, Waters.
Bill, so pretty clear.
I have a question. The size of the trees that will be planted, are they gonna be equivalent or better than what is taken down? And I don't mean height as much as, maybe I do mean them both.
So-
Diameter of the tree.
So, the, the short answer to that is no. All of the trees that he took down, short of those trees that we estimated were two inches or less-
Mm-hmm.
...were well beyond the diameter tree that we can routinely buy and handle-
Okay.
...properly from a nursery, okay?
Okay.
I will be, on the trees that go back on Doughty Road, I will be buying the trees. They will be coming out of this amount of money, okay? And so, the, you know, the tree warden will have control over the size-
Okay.
...and the thing. And we normally buy two to two-and-a-half inch caliper trees, that range. They're about two, right now, they're about $200 to $225 a tree. Some are a little less, depending on the species.
No, but it's, I'm just glad to hear that you'll be taking care of that.
Yes.
And it's not just-
Right.
-any tree will be planted. Thank you.
Could I add a comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
A question, really, for Tom. If, if we wanted to go to a larger caliper, and we paid the difference, because, let's say, it's gonna be in front of a lot, and we thought it would look nicer or better, would that be a possibility when the time comes?
The short answer to that is yes. My concern, we need to be discussing definitely watering and care. The larger the tree, the more I'd be concerned that it gets properly watered over a several-year period, okay, so that it does get properly established.
Okay.
I have a question, Tom. What, will you be replacing them in kind, the same type of tree? Obviously, not the white ash, we know, but if it was a maple, or a cherry, or something like that, are you going to attempt to do the same type of mix of trees?
So, the short answer to that is yes. However, okay, a couple things come into play here. One would be, you know, the sightline safety.
Yep.
So, you know, there's gonna be some issues there, or how, where we can replace a tree, and that type of thing. And the other thing is, one side of the street has the power lines, and, you know, in consideration of that and everything else, you know, we're not gonna plant a full-sized tree under the power line. So, you know, there obviously will probably be some flowering crabs, or some dogwoods, or, you know, something else that's a much smaller statured tree-
But that's-
...that would go under the power lines, okay? Again, you know, the, we try to follow the right tree in the right place, but yes, in general, if we can get a maple back, if we can, you know, get a cherry, or, you know, some of the other, you know, zelkovas, or maybe a white oak, you know, there were some oak trees taken. So, yeah, it would be a mix-
Okay.
...and hopefully, for the most part, native trees, who, again, replicate, you know, the more native look of a scenic road.
Good. Okay, good. And again, I would point, just, just saying that, you know, certainly, we're gonna get more income from there, so that these, the tree fund will encourage, will be able to plant trees also in other places around the town.
Yes. Yep. And, and, you know, Mr. Cormier has offered to do that in future years, you know, that we can work with his schedule, in lieu of me contracting out with other contractors. So, you know, as, as we go forward, we'll see how that plays out, but that's why, you know, it starts at the higher number, and then, you know, if he plants trees, he'll at least get some of that money back. But he'd be working for it.
Thank you. All right, anybody else need any other information? Any other info coming in? All right, I will take a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Coniff, do I have a second?
Second.
And Waters. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor, motion. All those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. All right, so Ms. Bubon, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do. So, I would recommend that the board grant the scenic road special permit, as requested, for the removal of trees and stone wall portions, as noted in the application, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall not remove any portion of the stone wall until a driveway permit is received for that lot. Number two, the applicant shall deposit the sum of $28,655 for the tree planting gift account when a building permit is obtained for either Lot 6 or Lot 3. The applicant shall deposit a sum of $15,050 for the tree planting gift account when a building permit is obtained for Lots 1 or Lots 12. And I should note that $1,007 was already paid, so there's no need to include that in the conditions.
Okay, good. Do I, thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question?
Mr. Blanchard, yeah, okay, questions?
Should we put in that, that the proponent is, has permission to repair the existing walls when they're crumbling at any time?
Repair of, repair of stone walls are not subject to the scenic roads permit. So, you have the right to repair, you just don't, and you actually have the right to remove and replace, so you could tear it all down to rebuild it, but you just don't have the right to remove without-
Okay.
...replace.
Any other discussion on the motion? Motion, yes?
Because it is a joint hearing, I think the minutes ought to reflect that, my vote also on that.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Good point. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed, including, so, the motion carries unanimously on a vote of seven to zero, including the tree warden who voted in favor of the motion. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a good night, guys.
Night.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain.
Cutting it so close, my apologies.
Thank you, Ms. Chantagne.
Yes.
All right.
Is that Bruce's thumb dries in my laptop?
Yes.
Okay.
Space and Recreation. All right, Ms. Bubon, town plan or update?
Okay. So, you have, in your packet, several items, and one is the final draft of the open space and recreation plan.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I would really like to thank everyone for their participation in the plan. I think we had really good turnouts at the public forums. We had a lot of participation from boards as we went through this. We, the photo contest, I think, brought new people in, and I would really like to thank Ms. DeCoursey for all of her help with Section 5. She did a lot of research that was able to be incorporated, and of course, for the final lining everything up and the editing to make everything look the same. So, all of you have been participating in the process, and I know we sent you a link to the plan online, so I'm hopeful that you've at least perused it. But I think the one thing that we learned through this process is that, you know, our community is changing a little bit, in that we are getting more of an older demographic, and we really need to consider them when we're thinking about recreational activities. I spoke at the senior center a couple of times, and really had a great turnout, and got a lot of good feedback from the seniors of different things they would like to see, like a fitness trail or pickleball, and you'll see that reflected in our goals. Another big one was dog park. I don't think we could've heard "dog park" one more time, so you'll see that reflected in our goals. And another issue that came up quite often was that we have lots of water, but we don't have great access to it. And so, the Streeter Point Beach was brought up as an area that we should ask the Board of Selectmen to investigate the possibility of leasing that back from the Army Corps of Engineers, because from the research that we did during this process, we learned that once an Army Corps beach area is closed due to lack of funds, they just don't open it back up. So, that you'll see identified as a goal that we would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to investigate, to see whether it's even a possibility. And then, we also learned that although we have the recreation area, and we have a great playground at Burgess, we really have nowhere for mothers, or fathers, or caretakers to bring children during the day when school's not in session. So, we heard a lot of people asking for a playground for little kids that's accessible during the day when school's in session, or when the recreation is in session, and especially for, you know, smaller children. And then, finally, the fields. So, you know, we, we heard back that a lot of people wanted the fields, but, you know, apparently, it wasn't enough for town meeting again. So, you'll see in our comment section that we encouraged the Recreation Committee to investigate other options and to develop a new strategy for going forward, to provide people with the recreational opportunities they need. So, we just felt it was, you know, they were trying it again, and that was great, but it didn't go through, so obviously, need to reevaluate where we're going with that fields plan. And maybe there's some, you know, smaller pieces that can be done to provide the, you know, the recreational opportunities that people are seeking. So, all in all, I think it was a good process. It was long. I'm very thankful that it's almost over. So, tonight, I am asking for a letter of support from the Planning Board that we can send in to the state with the draft plan, and I'm going to the Board of Selectmen on Monday to ask for the, the same thing. And there is actually, in your packet, a draft letter for the chair to sign, if you wouldn't mind doing so.
All right, do we need a vote? We should have a vote.
Yes, please.
Can I have a vote to, to send in the letter of support from the Planning Board for review and approval? Okay, Mr. Blanchard, do I have a second?
Second.
And Waters. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. You want me to sign this one?
Do you have the original?
Do you have an original?
Yeah. We have an original, please. I'll find it before you leave.
That's fine.
That one, I don't, my copy's a little faded. If yours isn't, you could use that one.
Yeah, well, the top, the-
Yeah, yeah.
Letterhead is.
Okay. The other thing in, in your packet is a letter from the Sturbridge Farmers Market Committee, and they're announcing start of the farmers' market, which will begin on June 24th through September 30th, excluding September 9th. And that's the road race, the Team Hoyt road race on the 9th. And that will run from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the Common. And they are asking if boards want to man a booth on a particular Sunday to distribute information. So, I wasn't quite sure what, if there would be any interest, or I'm not entirely sure what if, information the Planning Board would pass out, because I'm assuming it will be residents and non-residents coming, but I wanted to put it out there.
Does this, do you have any sense, is this the, boards individually, or would this be the town, or?
Well, it says, "When the board met to discuss what groups would potentially fit the profile, your organization was one members felt was a great asset to our community, and we would love to have you participate." So, each week, we will showcase one or more local groups to share their mission with market visitors.
I don't know, is anybody, any ideas? Anybody interested? What do you think?
I mean, if we had a purpose for being there, if we had an agenda, I'd be glad to volunteer to do one. I just don't know what people would be looking for, or if we want to kinda have a handout as to what we have done in the last, I don't know, six months or a year.
Mm-hmm.
Just to give people an idea of what the Planning Board does, maybe is-
Maybe I'll speak to Kevin and try to give a little more detail on that, but I'll mark down that you will-
I was, I was just thinking that maybe if you teamed up with-
Another-
...like Conservation and CBA-
Somebody, yeah, something that might go-
Something that was like, you know.
Right.
But again, I don't know what we hand out, or what you do.
Maybe just the town brochures or something, but it's not really related to it.
If you have some feedback, I, I mean, I'd, I would volunteer to do it for one, one of the sessions, and, and report back and see, let people know what we've, what the feedback was from folks.
I'll investigate that a little further. Sorry, I probably should've spoken to Kevin before the meeting, but-
Yeah, but you could do things like the master plan.
Yeah, but you could do things like the master plan. You know, don't we have, don't we have the little, yeah, don't we have the little...
We have a big list.
I was thinking, I was thinking, didn't we have a little synopsis thing?
Yeah, maybe a little bit different. I mean, you know, when I was at Palmer, they had a group that had a farmer's market on the Common, you know, quite a long time. And really, there were very few people there that were going there to try to look for things about the town. Because they had their favorite vegetable person, or somebody that had honey, or somebody else that baked stuff, so, I mean, I, I'm not so sure. I mean, it's up to you.
Right, I mean, I'm not so sure that...
I don't think it's really a high priority for people who are down there to try to buy something.
I think we'd have to have some kind of a handout to make it worthwhile, if we're gonna do something at all, right?
I think maybe...
They get people to come there every week and buy things to keep the, you know, farmers, make it worthwhile being down there.
Are there north of 20 vendors so far, for the first one?
Yeah, they, yes, so I think there are 28 people registered, but it doesn't mean they're, all 28 are going to be out every week, so...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think they did it at the Harvest Festival, there was a town.
Yeah, but it was, um...
But that was a town.
It was a town booth, and it had lots of different information, and lots of us did different things, like, you know, some of us set up in the morning, I was here early in the morning.
That's what I was thinking, that I could see.
Yeah, it's one, that was just one day, so...
And they've excluded a farmer brewer from being there, is that the idea?
It's not for me.
I was gonna say something, Charlie.
All right, well, if you get more feedback, and then see what you can do.
Sure, I'll let people know. And the SEDS report is also in your packet, so you'll recall, this is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the region. And I used to take care of this, and now Kevin does, so it's nice. And it used to be done by Central Mass Regional Planning Commission with input from all the area, region planners and town administrators, and now the Worcester Chamber has taken this over, so, I really, you know, I think it's well done. I have no comments, I don't know if any board members had any particular comments. I think the thing that I noticed with this is it's more generic, because it's to, you know, it's for the whole, written for the whole region. Where before, towns could submit certain things, like I had the Commercial Tourists District included on the SEDS before, and so, you know, I raised some of those points. I was able to sit in on a meeting with Leon and Kevin, but it's just being done in a different format now, so I, I don't really see any comment that we could offer. I don't know if anyone else noted, noticed anything, but... All right, the next meeting is June 26, 2018, of course. Baba Sushi will be coming in to continue the parking discussion, and then the Pilot Travel Quarterly Report came today, but I didn't have a chance to copy it, so it'll be in the next packet. And then I have one last thing that I have to grab.
I have a couple of items I'd like to discuss before she brings this one in.
I have something to bring up.
Okay, so there old and new business. Actually, there's Bumon, so, there's some old and new business.
Well, you're my old business now.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to say, thank you on behalf of the town, but mainly on half, on behalf of my department, the Planning Department. So, when I came in 2005, you were the chair, and, as you know, I walked into an office that had been vacant for some six months, and you were wonderful, and at times, when I thought that I was going to leave, you made me realize that there was a reason to stay on. And I think that your leadership and your volunteerism is just fantastic, and it really, truly exemplifies what it means to be a public servant. I am so happy to have had the opportunity to work with you. I'm certainly gonna miss you, and, but I'm happy that I can also call you my friend after all these years. And the one thing that I will say is, you chaired some really difficult meetings, you took some heat from some people unnecessarily on many, many occasions, and I think you handled it all in stride, and tried really hard not to take it personally, and I think that's really what a public servant needs to do. But anyway, thank you, I wish you well. I will certainly miss you, and I'm sure members of the board would like to say thanks to you as well.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
So I would ask anyone else if they would have anything to say? Oh, my goodness.
13 years, it's been, and I've known you a lot longer than that, as you know. But it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. At the same time for me, I think.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate what you've been through.
Certainly have done an outstanding job, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I was just gonna say that it's been a pleasure, I appreciate, this board's been together for quite a while, and I do appreciate all the work you all put in all the time, too, that, you know, it's nice to come here and have a board you can rely on, so thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if all the members of the audience are also invited to stay after the meeting, we do have some cupcakes and refreshments, so...
Okay. Here we go. Anybody invited to come down? It's an open door.
Come on down.
There's some old and new business still, right?
Just a quick thing, the state put a traffic count on Brookfield Road by the Turnpike Bridge this week. And the, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is, school's out next week. I mean, if they're looking to get an accurate traffic count, you know, 70%...
I'm not sure who put it there, why they put it there.
You know what I mean? It's not gonna be...
Sometimes the RPAs do regional counts every year in specific locations, and they tend to do them around the same date every year, so it could be that, I'm not really sure.
I mean, if it's for a week, then fine, but, you know, if they're looking for data over a couple of months, then, you know, they're missing out on the...
Not quite sure.
Realistic traffic.
I wanted to ask about the dog facility at the old Lieber Candy, is that progressing?
Yes and no, so, they, they have progressed in terms of septic system reports and repairs, however, they have not yet closed on the property. Her extension to purchase runs out this Friday, so I'm hopeful that they will close on the property.
The other thing I wanted to ask about, at the town meeting, it was a difficult issue on the expanding the ball fields. The land that is being acquired above New Boston Road near the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club, is that land potentially big enough to also present other opportunities for recreation fields?
So the Plimpton property, actually, if you remember back to the town meeting when we acquired that, there was a 15 acre set aside for future recreation use.
15 acres, oh, okay, okay.
But there's a...
Are you talking about the one, though, that's coming up?
Endangered species, now we can't touch it, right?
They went away.
Are you talking about that, or one that...
The endangered species went away.
No, but was that the property you were talking about? The Plimpton property, or...
They left. Yes, the endangered species are no longer there.
You already purchased.
Just four of them.
I knew they weren't wanted.
Oh.
Seriously, you're gonna think of this the whole day.
I guess, as far as endangered species go, you don't really know until you file an application with natural heritage endangered species, and I'm not, I don't believe that has been done. So, sometimes there are sightings in different locations, and I'm not sure. I hadn't heard...
So it's still a possibility, then?
Yes. Hadn't heard that it was not usable.
Okay, anybody else have any old and new business? All right.
Just one more, just a quick thing, I heard they were closing in two weeks, the Mokel Station, they're gonna stop. Have you heard that?
The what?
The what?
115?
Oh, the Roy Rogers. The Roy Rogers property?
I'm not sure if they're starting in two weeks. Were you at the last conservation meeting when they were there? So...
No, they were supposed to do that, this past meeting, and they're gonna come back with their plans.
To the Conservation Commission, so I'm not, I'm not certain that they're starting in two weeks.
That's it?
That's it.
Very good.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. Any second, Ms. Chamberlain? Ms. Hart, second?
Sure, whatever.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries unanimously, thank you.